You know what, it's easy to pick up.
Are there rules?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Probably the rules are the hardest things to pick up.
Did you ever play tennis? Oh, if you play tennis, you'll pick it up real quick. Everybody that I know that played tennis and then started pickleball picks it up real quick. It's basically a combination of tennis and paintball.
So you can bounce the ball?
Um, certain times after serve, it has to bounce. But no, it doesn't always have to bounce. So there's a, if you get on the app, it's called Team Reach, and it's A R C Pickleball. There's actually classes at A R C, um, certain days in the week. And they're fundamental classes. They teach you the rules. They give you drills to help you get better. And it's taught by a lady from the territory who was a P E teacher in Chicago. And she was a tennis instructor, and she's very good. And I honestly don't know this time of year when they're doing them.
I mean, I'd rather be here, I guess.
Or one. But get on the Team Reach A R C Pickleball app.
Do you have to put the volunteer or just Team Reach A R C?
Team Reach.
I'll do it. I'll do it.
After, after the meeting, um, I can show you what it looks like. Because we have two now. We have a Team Reach A R C, and we have a Team Reach the Way next door. So, let us put it upside down. But if you really want to take it up, I would suggest you do a beginner's class.
Yep. Are you ready? All right, you are set. All right. Let's call the regular city council meeting in order for the city of Galena, Illinois, Monday, September 8, 2025. Take roll, Mary Beth.
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Cooper?
Here.
Pegman?
Here.
Westman?
Here.
Weenan?
Here.
Here. We have a form next to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, Stephen Ryan, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberated and united as a one.
Okay, then, let's go ahead with item number 25C, day 0351. Reports of standing committees. Nothing tonight. That's what we had. Item number 25C, day 0352. Citizens' comments not to exceed 15 minutes as an agenda item, and not more than three minutes per speaker. Would you least suggest the council step up to the podium, state your name and your address?
Good evening, council. Um, my name is Jason Van Heerden. I live at 11438 West Horseshoe U. Lane. I'm sure that they could do a little longer, but anyway. My wife and I are both Galena residents. We own Set Workshop at 307 South Main Street. I have my own law practice, and my wife is the administrator of their security facility in town. Um, we are parents of three girls who attend Galena schools. They're 15 or almost 15, twelve, eleven, five. And I would be seeking to address the new business item 25C 0364, which is the removal of the Country Fair Halloween Weekend parking lot. Specifically, I'm concerned with a particular change that the group gave me after the name of the people parking lots on October 11th, 12th, and 25th has been changed. As the newly elected president of the Galena Schools Music Supporters Group, which is a 503(c)(3) organization, um, I find myself in the awkward position of being in kind of a potential opposition to the district on this one, who has been, uh, offered by the city manager as a recipient of that fundraising opportunity, which was long held by my, my organization. I believe our relationship, my, best of my understanding, has existed for the better part of the last two decades, where we have consistently consecutively held that opportunity with the city. Um, but I would say that I think Superintendent Vincent, if he were here, would tell you that my family has, in our short five years in the community, has done more than our fair share to support the district and this community as a whole. This not has any view of the district in particular. Um, but I was a bit taken aback when I was reviewing tonight's agenda to see that the city was terminating what I understood to be a mutually beneficial and successful partnership between the music supporters and the city. In a fair and effort to assign the district responsibilities and designate one of its affiliated groups, that's all this more specifically got on that, um, the right to select who the city will be working with in that regard going forward. I am surprised that this body would delegate the selection of this partnership in this way, if that appears to be what has been recommended by the city manager. Running the depot park lot in two of the busiest weekends in Galena is no easy task. It takes dozens of volunteers, giving hundreds of collective hours of their time. And beyond getting bodies to show up, there's a great many logistical challenges regarding the effective use of the space, ingress and egress to the parking lot, et cetera. Last year, 45 people gave a combined 203 hours of their time, 16 of which worked both events, both Country Fair and the Halloween Weekend. Um, and for their efforts, the music supporters parked an additional 203 cars. They had a 10% increase over 2023. They were awarded a greater split of the profits, where the city agreed to allow the, uh, art organization to keep 75% of the revenue. Um, and were then essentially fired without notice, without any performance review, without any reason to cause whatsoever, as the partnership after decades long has been awarded elsewhere. Or has suggested that it be awarded elsewhere. So what's changed? Were there complaints? If you ask, is that three minutes already? Oh, my goodness. I've got another page to go. I would just say there's been no complaints. There's been no changes. Police chief will tell you that. The chairman of the Country Fair will tell you that. The, uh, director of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce will tell you that. This is, in my opinion, to sum up, and I would certainly welcome my comments elsewhere, um, as we get to this agenda item. This is in poor taste to end a relationship like that with a community group, uh, in your community, a charitable group that's seeking to help, um, members of your community and students in our district. And, um, like I said, I would certainly offer more of my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Um, my name is Patrick Murphy. I am at 115 North Commerce, Galena, Illinois. I'm here today to speak about the parking lot fundraiser that the Music Boosters has managed for over 15 years. For the Music Boosters, this is the lifeline of the group, comprising approximately 75% of their annual income. With the proceeds of this fundraiser, the Music Boosters are able to fund student scholarships, the purchase of new instruments, the travel expenses, that allow students to represent our community at a higher level. This is a fund that has directly supported hundreds of students in the local school music department, providing them with resources they need to thrive. The Music Boosters were blindsided to learn of the proposal to reassign this fundraiser as it came without any prior communication. There was no discussion, no expressed dissatisfaction with their performance, and no opportunity to work together to find a solution. The Music Boosters have proven their commitment, efficiency, and value to Galena for over a decade and a half. Taking this fundraiser away would directly impact music students. It would mean fewer scholarships for talented seniors, fewer instruments for musicians, and fewer opportunities for students to travel and grow. These are the same students who play and sing in the city events around town, living windows, all of the city parades and local area parades, not to mention the 2025 Chicago St. Patrick Day Parade, which broadcast worldwide and spotlighted Galena High School as one of the longest participating bands in the history of the parade. An event that, I have to tell you, I was quite proud, as a Patrick, to witness, and as a Murphy and a Galenean, they've participated for over 50 years. Let's not forget the talented students that have been awarded and worked so hard to represent Galena throughout the country. They have all benefited from this fundraiser. I ask that you reconsider this proposal and allow the Music Boosters to continue their partnership with the city. They are ready and willing to discuss this and define collaborative efforts towards everybody's best interests, especially our students and the community. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Susan Bookless. I live at 11420 West Chetlin Lane. Uh, good evening. Thank you for giving me a chance to participate in our community's governance tonight. I appreciate all of the work that you do on our behalf. Uh, like I said, my name is Susan Bookless. My husband, William Bookless, was born here and works as a local architect. His parents have been active citizens for decades. I teach English at Galena High School and have loved and challenged my students, your children, for the last 10 years. My children, Billy and Betty, are 10 and 6 years old. When we outgrew the Little Yellow House on Franklin Street, we found our home on Chetlin Lane, a quiet street close enough for us to walk to school. On Friday, I learned that the lot bordering two sides of our property is set to be sold to the city for the purposes of housing the relocation of the police station. I am here tonight to voice my opposition to this action for two primary reasons. First, the impact on my family's safety. And second, the concerning lack of transparency and process that feels like backroom bargaining. I understand the need for change. As someone who taught in an inadequate building for many years, I know the challenges the current police department faces. However, with this change, my family's home would share a single driveway with a public building that would have police cars coming and going at all hours. I also have questions about the proposed change in zoning for this parcel, which is currently limited agriculture. Um, I'm concerned that this could be a case of spot zoning, which is not an appropriate way to handle community development. I am deeply disappointed that I only learned about this on Friday, giving me no time to discuss what would make me and my family comfortable with such a significant change to our neighborhood. The lack of cooperation and transparency is frankly upsetting. Community conversation should come before a decision is made. Instead of an open process, the city council is presented today with what feels like a done deal to purchase this property. A proper process would involve first voting on whether a new station is needed, then determining a budget, and then comparing multiple properties. The fact that this project seems to be moving so quickly with financing already being discussed makes it feel rushed and opaque. I understand that you cannot respond to me tonight, but I am asking for these conversations to happen in the future transparently. I know you are obligated to read ordinances three times unless you suspend the rules, and I sincerely hope that you will read this ordinance all three times to give the community the opportunity for public input. I would very much like to be part of that conversation moving forward. Please vote no on this real estate contract today to give the community time for due diligence. I understand that a change needs to happen, but I think that there are compromises we can make that make the situation good for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Mayor Renner, Matt Oldenburg. My name is Roseanne Schramman. I live in Deview, but we own a few parcels, one of them being Galena Chrysler. I would like to offer an alternative to the property having first reading tonight for the police station, the one that Miss Bookless just talked about. And I just heard about it this morning, that this was going on. We have a piece of property known as the Miller Body Shop. The address is 10840 West US 20. And it's the nicest piece of property, I've been told, in the tri-state area for visibility. It's three acres, more or less, and it's visible to anybody that comes to Galena. It sits right there at the point by cases. We've owned it 15 years, and we needed it at one time for out property or vehicles. And at one time, I think you probably remember, there were 100 Jeeps on that property. There's enough room for fire and city maintenance vehicles, if you decided to build on, on that property. There's no houses around the district, and the cemetery has very few complaints. We're open to negotiation with entertain a land contract with a down payment and balloon at the end of the term. There could be a right turn only on 20. It does exist, if you could work it out with the state. But the way it was graded, we did not work that out. It's not listed. We usually have a sign up, but Terry Cole has been renting it for a year and a half for some projects. So it's not listed. We have sold several properties using our attorney, who has handled the paperwork and the legalities. Pretty simple. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Roseanne.
Hello, my name is Rachel Lstra, and I live at 12747 West Tross Road in Galena. I would like to address the purchase of the real estate at 11422 West Chetlin Lane. I have several comments about why I believe it is not a suitable location for a police station, and some questions to propose to the council. First, the location has a shared driveway with a private residence. The owners of that private residence have small children. As children do, they play in their driveway and yard. We enjoy that if their private property will be infringed upon by this acquisition. A police station will bring a great deal more traffic, some of it potentially traveling at high rates of speed, as well as a great deal more noise to their residents and the neighborhood in general. While other adjacent lots are zoned commercial, they are zoned that way for a childcare facility and a church, hardly bringing the same level of noise and the speed of traffic that a police station would potentially bring. Why was this action not discussed with neighbors first? I also question the sense of moving the police department from a more central location downtown with multiple routes that police cars can get out to somewhere where if there happens to be a semi rollover on 20, they can't get downtown without a very circuitous route. Um, I also have comments and questions about the process that led to this acquisition. First, the property is currently zoned limited agricultural, so it will have to be rezoned. When will that rezoning take place? According to the tax bill for the property, the fair cash value is 310,000. I understand that its value is not the same as market value, but I do wonder paying almost three times what is currently assessed for fair cash value. Has the city had someone assess the property? If so, who was assessed? Were they hired for that? If so, why were they not hired in public, um, public meeting? Did the city hire a real estate agent for this transaction? Again, if so, why were they not hired in a public, open meeting? Um, I would also appreciate if someone could address when and where the urgent need to move this police station came up. I understand it's an old building, um, but it didn't become an old building overnight. Um, it's also not in the capital improvement plan passed by this council on December 9, 2024, nor was included in the budget passed for fiscal year 2026. This seems like if it's something that's been going on for a while, it could have been addressed, um, and planned for better than this. It feels very rushed, um, given that you're going to have to amend your budget for it. Um, and what is the plan if the Historic Planning Commission chooses not to allow the demolition of the current police station? Um, are you going to become landlords again? Are you going to have to sell property? What is the plan? And I have a few small notes that are a little pedantic. Um, but the council packet has the wrong month and year for the ordinance on it. And I have questions about the fact that the contract, real estate contract, is dated August. I understand that's probably when the seller signed it, but you cannot backdate a real estate contract like that. Um, and if you think you can, I'd like a legal explanation why, with citations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rick Periser, 113 South High Street. I for one fully support giving the police a professional building to operate from. That places a rat trap, it was a rat trap, and it would be a rat trap. However, linking that with the proposition of agreeing to spend $900,000 tonight, $900,000 tonight, with only 72 hours in which the public has been alerted to this, I find that offensive. 15 minutes input for $1 million? And really, folks, kick this around for a few more months. Prefer it. Seek some input, as some of the other audience members have stated. I don't know if that's a good location. I sympathize with Mrs. Bookless. But surely, there's, there's some other input that could be given to this decision before we sign the sales agreement. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Richard. Anybody else wishing to address the council at this time for anything else?
Lynn Giles, 230 Hopeway Avenue. And I'm also addressing the matter of moving the police station, uh, which I heard about just recently, like everyone else. My first thought was that this is a surprise. Uh, I thought the city had spent a lot of money remodeling and upgrading the place's current location. Now we're presented with a signed contract for this new location? Why this site? Uh, were there other options that were considered? Was there about another option just now? Uh, why were we not informed if the city planned to move the police department? Um, and it, it makes one wonder if this city council vote tonight is just a formality. So I will be sitting and listening for answers to those questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, is there anybody else wishing to address the council at this time for anything? All right, let's move ahead then to the consent agenda, CA 25-17. Do I have some type of a motion or a person, Katie Winn?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda. Item number CA 25-17.
Second. All right, they're moving second on consent agenda, CA 25-17. Any questions on any of it? Take roll call when we go.
Johnson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Pegman?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. All right, let's move ahead. This unfinished business we have, this new business. Let's move right into item number 25C, day 0361. Discussion and possible action on a sidewalk project at McDonald's at 957 Gear Street. Do I have a motion to open that up for discussion? All right, person, Katie Winn.
Make a motion to approve, um, the sidewalk project at Mc, at McDonald's at 957 Gear Street. Item number 25C dash 0361.
So a second?
Second.
All right, they're moving second item number 25C, day 0361. Discussion. What? Are we up and running yet? Time out. We'll see once.
Thank you for letting us know, because we don't know up here. Thank you.
Yes, let us know. Jesse, one, two, three. Test, test. One, two, three. Is it better?
It's only, it's only a little bit better, so.
We can hear you a lot.
I love, but that's, that's the way it is, so.
I, I will speak up then for you.
It's one mic.
Well, one mic, so definitely camera. Technology.
Now it's loud.
Now it is.
Now, testing, testing, okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second item number 25C, day 0361, reference to the sidewalk project at, uh, McDonald's at 957 Gear Street. Discussion on this? All right, person, Jerry, Russell.
It's basically a safety issue. Um, when the state did that, they made it down by adobos, and that's where it ended. Um, people have to walk in the street or on the edge of the road to get over to the, by the primary, primary lot there, and then connect that sidewalk and go up to wherever you want to go, up to Walmart or wherever. We'd have to put some crosswalks in up there, some ramps, ADA ramps. And I think that's the best location that we could put that sidewalk and connect to circle around.
Well, all right, person, Jerry, keep it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I, I think that it's good that we're going to have all the sidewalks hooked together up there. And, uh, you won't have to really block out the street that much. So it's a great idea.
I think it'd be important that we move forward with McDonald's project. They're revamping their parking lot, making it a green space, getting rid of some of the semis. They're going to put the sidewalk in at their cost. They were going to give us an easement, perpetual easement, to use that sidewalk and to maintain that sidewalk. And for that, they wanted a total of $65,000. We had $30,000 set aside in the budget to put our sidewalk in with the ADA ramps, which we will get our people to put in. And also with a tax abatement for 10 years, up to a amount of $35,000, whatever would come first. Uh, so a total of $65,000 over the next years, uh, for the perpetual easement of this sidewalk to connect it from what the state put in, so that they're safe traveling through over to Irvine Street. So that is what this is all about at this time. Any other, any questions on this? I think we should just move forward with their project that they're. All right, take roll call on that.
Cooper?
Yes.
Pegman?
Yes.
Westman?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead then to item number 25C, day 0362. It's the first reading of an ordinance approving the purchase of real estate at 11422 West Chetlin Lane, subject to two appraisals. I'd like to have that in the motion. I have a motion, all right, person, Jerry, Russell.
I'll make a motion for the first reading of an ordinance approving the purchase of real estate at 11422 West Chetlin Lane, subject to two appraisals.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right, they're moving second item number 25C, day 0362. Discussion. Now we, oh, Jerry.
There's a lot of things that we can do. Um, I talked to Susan last night about putting the fence along the driveway. Um, and hopefully that will keep her kids inside her yard. The police are not going to be going screaming up and down that, uh, driveway. They wouldn't have to use their sirens going out of the police department. They could use to turn the sirens on if it's an emergency at the lights when they get up to the highway. When you see an ambulance going by Chetlin Lane, they're going sometimes down there with their ambulance, with their sirens on. County squad cars are going down there with their sirens on. But leaving the police department, they don't need to, they don't need to go 50 miles an hour down the driveway, turn left, and turn the sirens on until they get out to the highway. I've been in that building down there for 27 years. It's probably, it's a hellhole, actually. Um, the place is caving in. It should be condemned. It should have been condemned a long time ago. The asbestos that's in there, when we are downstairs in the police department, the floor is full of asbestos. The tire was chipping off. Um, it's, it's a terrible building. And this building that we're looking at is pretty much moving in ready. And I, I, to me, I think it'd be good for the neighborhood out there. It's safe out there now, pretty much. It's going to make it safer. And I don't, I think the exaggeration about speeding down the lanes is not right. So I think, and been looking around, and this is a moving ready place to go.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Uh, Roger, do you have something?
Um, well, yeah, I would just say that I actually think it'll, uh, allow them to get to other parts of the city more quickly because they'll be able to go either down 20 either way or down Franklin, and they won't be bottlenecked in the center of city during our high-traffic area during the weekends and stuff. So I see it as a, a great way to expedite police movement.
Any comments or rumors?
Yeah, and I understand that the building itself, we're talking almost turn heat, we're going to bring, um, bulletproof blast from this police station to that police station. We don't have to repurchase things like that. It needs to build walls. Um, that's pretty great as opposed to building a brand-new building.
So did you have something?
Yeah. So I, I do, I think most people agree that the, the current building is, is not workable and, and we need a new, we need a new station. Um, I, and I think the availability, the speed at which this, this happened, that there's been concern about it, is the availability of the property itself became an opportunity, and that's why there, it feels like a jump at the opportunity. Um, that being said, we, as a council and the city, tend to, in my observation, get ourselves into trouble when the perception is different. when the perception is different from the community or the, the citizens at large. And so this would be one of those instances that I would rather take a breath and take into account what everyone has said and take time to answer the questions about the zoning, about the cash value. I do appreciate that the mayor put in that it would be based on two assessments, fix everything with the backdate of the contract and, and talk about the cost and the budget because I think that being transparent and open about all of those things, even if it means it happens two weeks from now at the next meeting, is important to do.
Yeah, we're not trying to hide anything on anybody. This is the first time that it was coming to the public in an open session, this agenda item. The old building at 312, we've had floor draps down in the dungeon holding up the floors so that the cop cars don't fall through. It's sinking on both sides. We've got an apartment building on one side that's, we don't want anything to collapse that way. So we had to look around, we have been looking around. We looked at several places. And they seem to be available. We brought it here tonight to discuss it. We got pending, or subject to two appraisals. It's not, nothing's signed yet. We've done, nothing's been signed yet. We're still investigating the possibilities of what we're going to do out there with that, if we do go that way. And Mrs. Bookless, you know, I, I can understand your concern. We can complete that and work with you. If, if it goes that far, we can work with everybody. Jury.
Yeah, I think just the fact that, that it's out there closer to the schools is a safety, is an added safety thing.
So I mean, nothing's, nothing's being hidden on anybody because this is the first time that we were able to bring it to an agenda item to discuss it, get a couple of appraisals on it, discuss it some more. Got to, as far as zoning goes, you know, when you've got public facilities, they can go anywhere in any zoning district, whether it's a police department, a fire department, a police satellite, base, whatever. But the city has the power, no matter what district it's in, to go in there for public services, buildings. Anybody else? All right, take roll on that. Oh.
I will go and say I'm not going to repeat anything that's already been said. I do think, you know, working with Susan to address, like I talked to Susan on the phone, either fence, look at some shared driveway options. It's a great in and out, being outside, but I'm not going to.
Difficult, difficult.
Repeat everything, but like, this is just the first reading, so.
All right, take roll on this first reading.
Tagmire?
No.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes. All right, motion carries. Let's move ahead then on item number 25C-0363. It is a discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding with Joe Davis County for a parking facility at 312 North Main Street. I have a motion to move ahead with this memorandum. It's just the beginning of this. All persons, jury, rest.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Joe Davis County for a parking facility at 312 North Main Street, 25C-0363.
Second.
Discussion on this one now. If everything falls down, no matter what we do, the building's going to have to be, it'll cost well, close to two million or better just to try to get it up, but then what have you got up there at 312, you know? And like I said, with that apartment building next door, it just scares me.
What's the contingency on this compared to, you know, getting the police station somewhere else? Like, what's the? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if we're talking about, if we're talking about the parking facility and the police station going somewhere else, but the police station obviously has to go somewhere else first. So how are we tying those two in each other?
Right now, I think, I think, I think we're not tying them in just quite yet. It's just at the preliminary stages of getting things aligned.
This is just the MOU with the counties?
Yes, that's all, yes, and.
Then, once we get the green light and then somewhere else to go.
It'll be discussed a lot more. Roger.
Um, I, I think this is a potentially awesome project. It would help solve some of our parking issues that we have downtown here. My only thought is maybe if we could negotiate a little bit better arrangement with the county. They are getting forty of the fifty spots, if that's what there is, for Monday through Friday of usage. And we're then sharing their revenue with the rest of it. And so it seems like they're getting more use out of this if, if, if this goes through. So I would like to see us negotiate that maybe a little better.
And I agree with that a little bit, but, you know, nothing's in stone.
Right, I understand.
It's just the stones, you know, there's things that are thrown out. All persons, jury.
Um, I would also add the, the split of more of a fifty-fifty and more maybe proposed sixty-forty. If it turns two times on the weekends, that'd be eighty-three thousand. Parking ramps aren't money generators. They very rarely pay themselves. But I do think that by the county taking up forty spots, there are still some really busy days midweek that I don't think a fifty, fifty split is fair. So hopefully we can look into that.
Yeah, like, like I said, the paid parking, if, if, if this transacts, the paid parking will also help to trace some of the costs what we went through. But like I said, with the county itself, it's just a memorandum of understanding at this time. That'll be what's brought back here.
Um, that little building that we had on Main Street that had only eight parking spaces, that generated pretty good money for the year. So we're not going to be, like, losing big dollars with this parking.
I don't remember, was, did Mark say, I thought, I was trying to look for today, it was like about eight thousand dollars per parking or eighty-four hundred per parking spot is what it equates to?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not cheap. Anything else right now at this time on this memorandum of understanding with the county? Take roll call on that, Mary Beth.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Tagmire?
Yes.
Runner?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, then, at this time, on item number 25C-0364, school of the country fair weekend and Halloween parade, public parking lot operations plan. Katie, one of you accuse yourself of this?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion on that? All persons, jury, rest.
I'll make a motion to table this, 25C-0364. So we can get, have some more discussion on this. Like, like these gentlemen said here tonight, they've been doing it for fifteen years or so. And they, I think, in my opinion, even when I was a chief, they did a great job down there. And I'm sure other people do a great job, but with no expla, explanation to them, I, I think it's.
Okay, your request is to table this. That's all, that's all you had to say. I need a second on this table because it's a new item. All right, so right now, that's been tabled till next meeting till we get further information. All right, thank you. Okay, then, we gotta get Katie back. Short live. Thank you, Cindy. These are pretty fast when you're not at the table.
I guess I'm about to talk or go at this table.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move ahead then, item number 25C-0365, the warrants. Do I have a motion on the warrants?
Make a motion to approve the warrants. Item number 25C-0365.
Okay, do I have a second on the warrants? All right, they're moving second on item 25C-0365. Any questions on any of the bills? Take roll call.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Tagmire?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Let's move ahead, item 25C-0366, all persons, county. All persons, jury, keep it.
I have nothing tonight, Charlie.
All right, all persons, see you, Johnson.
I have a couple things tonight, okay? Um, number one, Grant Park, there are no crosswalks around Grant Park. The one that I'm especially concerned with is Van Buren Street because when there are cars parked on Park Avenue, you have people walking just between the cars to go up Van Buren Street to get to, you know.
Grant.
I'd like to see something for safety there. My next one is the brand-new sidewalk slash bike path that we built. So far, we have two times that cars have jumped the curb on that area. One at Stony Creek and one right after Dell Street. That area is like two feet off of Highway 20 where people are traveling at forty miles an hour or more. I just would like to see something maybe we could do to put a safety, I don't know what, to separate that from the street.
Okay, you're down by Highway 20?
Yes, yes. And then, if you see something, say something. And I mean, like anything that needs to be reported to the police, please do it when you see it. If it's something that happened and you come to the city a week later with a complaint, the city can't do anything about it. Please call the police, make the complaint, whatever it is. Have the police make the report, okay? The last thing, I hope with that approved pickleball tournament, we're going to take a good look at how many cars are out there because during the summer, we had a bit of a problem just with tiny parking spaces being taken at the pool with residents then not being able to park with their children. And just, you know, let's, let's be conscious of how many cars we're going to be taking, uh, parking spaces going to be taking up. And, and as that sport gets more popular, we're going to probably need more places for people to put their cars. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. All persons, see you, Tagmire.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming to the meeting and, and speaking up about what your ideas and concerns so that we can address them. Sometimes some of this is, you know, we don't, we don't know the concerns, you know, from looking at a piece of paper and discussing it. We don't know them until the residents let us know what's going on. And the stair climb is Saturday, it's nine AM. And if you're gonna join me, please join me. If you're not, please donate or cheer or bring water or something. Thank you.
Thank you. So you all, the person, Katie Winn?
Um, yeah, just following up on the cobblestone light that I had brought up a couple meetings ago. So I don't know if Matt could maybe report on that during his report. And then the pickleball courts look great. I think it's a great addition to the parks. It's been lovely to see people over at the park, using the park. About twelve cars, Cindy, I counted.
Yeah.
A couple times so far, so. And the noise has been no more than a skateboard. I think you can't even hear it. So thanks to everybody who worked on that project.
Thank you. All the person, jury, rest.
Just like to thank the fire department, police department, and city crew for the fire that occurred here the other day on Commerce Street. I seen a little video of it, and she was going pretty good. And that's it.
Okay, all the person, Roger.
Uh, Katie's already expressed most of my comments. The pickleball court is amazing. I just would like to thank everybody that worked hard on the private funding, the raising of the funds to help contribute to the city. They're still, they're still asking for private funding, which they're going to get more, I'm sure, this, this winter. And that's going forward. I've played on the pickleball courts twice. It was Saturday, the first day it was open, and this morning. They're amazing. We've had about fifteen people both days. It's just going to get more and more popular. It's just a really great asset to Red Park.
Okay, thank you, Roger. All right, let's move ahead, item number 25C-0367, city administrators report, whatever you got for us tonight, Matt.
Good evening, mayor and council. With the pickleball courts, we're, they're open now as of Saturday morning. We do have a couple of minor issues to work on, just with some drainage and that. So we'll be doing that before we close out the contract for that, for construction. The EV chargers have been installed. We're waiting on a programming item to be completed this week because hopefully that's going to be done. And then we can get those activated and in service. And the pool slide construction will begin next Monday, or next week.
All right, thank you, Matt.